Welcome everyone to the Ontario School Boards. February meeting, I guess it's February. I think it's February. So we're glad that you're here and we're going to welcome all of our visitors. There's too many for me to name you well, but I'm glad you're here. We'll start with our flag salute. Director Evans, would you please lead us in the flag salute?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flags of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I always feel like I'm gonna mess that up, Renee.
Thank you. That's why you're doing it. Thank you so much. Okay, do we have any agenda changes for tonight? The one thing that I feel that we need to talk about towards the end of our meeting is we've got to figure out what we're doing about superintendent evaluation. So I'd like to add to the agenda at the end of the business items.
I agree. I think that's a good idea.
So, so is that a motion and a second? Renee, did you move that? And Derek, seconded that?
I can take it that way if, if we would like.
I'll move, I'll move to do that if that, if that's what you'd rather happen.
Okay, so it's been moved. Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, so we're moving seconded to add the superintendent evaluation at the end of the meeting tonight. And that's, that's just finding a time when we're gonna do that. Okay?
Right. I mean, my, my suggestion would be that, I mean, the topics, kind of topics for future board meetings type of a thing, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So. Do we need to discuss which form we're gonna use during that discussion?
We'll just, we'll discuss it during that time.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so it's been moved and seconded to add superintendent evaluation at the end of the meeting tonight. Director Rodriguez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Director Evans?
Yes.
Director Draper?
Can I vote yes while he's trying to unmute?
Yes, please, Director Gettis.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Director Draper, are you here? Motion passes for two. Whatever. He's, he's not here. We're, we're gonna put it on the agenda. Okay, so.
I wonder if he, oh, there he is.
There he is.
There you are. Are you in favor of that, Derek?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, all right, so five, five in favor of the motion passes. So our next item on our agenda is the consent items. Are there anything on that? I, we had time to discuss it in our work session. If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent items. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the consent items.
Thank you, Director Rodriguez. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent items. Director Rodriguez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Director Gettis?
Yes.
Director Draper?
Yes.
Director Evans?
Yes.
And I vote yes. It's unanimous. Okay. Next item is the reports and recognition board bits. Does anyone have anything for board bits? Blanca, do you have anything?
No, not today.
Director Draper?
Yes, I, I do today. I, for months with all of this COVID, we've been talking about all the superheroes that have been in the medical industry, some of those superheroes in our district are teachers that work tirelessly, but I want to mention a superhero that we haven't talked about yet. All of these superhero kids that are going through this unprecedented time that they don't understand why they have to do it, particularly some of the smaller elementary kids. It's frustrating. It's tiresome sometimes. I think of the high school kids who aren't back in school yet and particularly our seniors who have essentially lost their entire senior year. Those kids are superheroes in my mind. They are, they're doing something that none of us have even heard of doing and a lot of them have smiles on their face. They're superheroes and I want to acknowledge it.
Thank you for your comments. Director Evans, did you have anything?
Not today. Thank you.
Okay, Director Gettis?
I, I just wanted to, and I've probably said this before, but thanks to the teachers and the staff and everybody else that's worked really hard to get our K through eight kids back in school and to get, even though the high school's not back full-time, to get them back in a lot more significantly. I know that was a lot of work and through our vaccine clinics, I've, I've had the opportunity to see several teachers and administrators and and staff come through and, and when I see them and I have time, I usually try to go over and have a short conversation with them as, as much as I can. And I, sure, I didn't see everybody or catch anybody, everybody, but I appreciate those conversations and I appreciate the candidness that they have. And I'm, I appreciate that feedback that I get when, when I do have the opportunity to speak with, with staff and administration. I learned a lot in those conversations and I appreciate that. And I know it was a lot of work to do what you guys have done and it, it is appreciated.
Director Rodriguez?
I changed my mind. I do wanna say something.
Okay.
I want to say thank you to Lisa's responses and, oh, thank you for all the work that they did just to fix those darn chairs.
That was, that was above and beyond, wasn't it?
And I look at the children sitting on the chairs and I think, oh my God, I bet, I bet they want to sit on the floor so bad. It's more comfortable.
As, as a parent, but.
I'm sorry.
As a parent whose son was sitting on the floor, I, I, yeah, he didn't seem to be very phased when he first came to me, like the first day of school and said, we have to sit on the floor, so. I, uh, definitely, you know, it is a lot of stuff and a lot of, lot of changes that have to be made and may have to be made. And we definitely have to be resilient for sure. And, uh, I think, uh, I think tomorrow we'll have a little bit of happy news, but, uh, we'll hear about that tomorrow, so.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your, um, your contributions here. Let's move on to the financial report with Mary Jo Evers.
Renee, I think Lisa wanted to say something.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Couldn't hear her.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to, um, thank you, Director Rodriguez. I appreciate that.
Okay, um, let's move on to the financial report with Mary Jo Evers.
Hi. So I owe you guys an apology because last month I said that I was going to be bringing some budget resolutions this time, mostly around the second wave of the Easter funding. But we are barely halfway into the first Easter funding and so I kind of chose not to do that this month, but it, it will be coming shortly, so I, I apologize if it felt like a cliffhanger. We have gotten all of the forms out, W2s and the ACA forms and we're doing some cleanup on our financial system because we've been on it for five years now already. And so we're working through some of that and then we'll roll it forward and, and get going on budget. We hope to have some info from the state on where the budget is actually gonna land next biennium. It's usually the first of March that we hear where, where it lands, but they're pretty far apart right now, so we'll see how much progress they could make this week.
Right. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mary Jo while she's here?
So Mary Jo, I got a quick question. Looking at your general ledger, that I'm just kind of glancing at some of the percentages and the elementary co-curricular is really low. It's less than 1%. Is there, is that because they haven't been in school or is there, what's?
That's exactly the reason.
Okay.
That, that is actually where we placed the robotics, the Lego robotics.
Okay.
Elementary schools had. And so the whopping $257 was some supplies that was bought to replenish stuff from last year. But yeah, that's those, the, the other thing about those reports is in the encumbrance, that encumbers the salary for the entire year, even though we haven't paid it out. And so that can make those reports, especially if you're looking at them in August and you're like, wait a minute, we've already spent 90%. No, you really haven't. It's just
Right.
reserved in there, but.
Yeah. And then the nursing services is also really low?
That one, um, uh, you weren't here, but, uh, so when we were doing the budget last year, there was the new SIA funds that came about as a result of the cat tax on the corporate activity taxes. And the, so we did a bunch of, of community outreach to figure out how we should spend those funds. But because it, it didn't make sense honestly to us that they would say, hey, we're gonna cut state school fund, but here's this grant. So do things that you would have done. So what we chose to do was not budget that SIA fund at all. And we budgeted the, the things that we felt were necessities within the general fund, one of which was that nurse. And so now that, that position, that we know that we have SIA funds, we know what the amount is. We did a supplemental budget to create the fund and we moved that person out, so.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
No problem.
Director Rodriguez, you have a comment?
Yes, um, we are fortunate to have Mary Jo present at the board meetings. I attended a board meeting in another school district and that doesn't happen, so the board members have to wait until the next month for, to receive those sensors. So thank you Nikki for making it easy on board members. And by the way, the board members in the other district were so patient, waiting a month to get a response.
That's a long time, Blanca. I don't know if we're that patient.
I know.
I, I would forget what my question was by the time we got back to the, to the answer.
Well, thank you and thank you, Mary Jo, for walking us through that. It's time now for the superintendent's report. Superintendent Albizu?
Um, so you all received my written report. I gave you an update on our new outdoor sports guidance and practices are underway. And, and that is very exciting for us. Something else that I did want to say, we talked a little bit about Easter funding and what it, it's starting to look like is that with the new administration, what they're saying now is there's going to be a third round of, of funding coming through. So we had essentially CARES Act, S R one. This most recent that's coming through that we've talked to you about and giving, given you in some information about is this S R two funding, which is supposed to be four to five times more than the, the, the first round. And now what we're hearing is that there'll be an S R three, which is supposed to be, I don't know, I, I've heard a lot of different things, maybe five to 10 times more than S R two. That's not approved yet, but there is the potential there. So we're just kind of waiting to see what happens with that and and I think the other big piece of especially the S R two dollars is we're still learning about what we can use that money for and we're asking lots of questions. They're not really giving us answers right now. I think that they're, they're trying to get that straight. I say they, meaning Oregon Department of Education, but I think that hopefully, especially with the S R three money, that they'll be more flexible with the use of that. And, and kind of open that up a little bit more. So that could be coming soon. And then, and then of course, I think you, you all saw that we have a parent group who is interested in, in starting a clay target league in Ontario. Super exciting and fun and another opportunity for our kids to get involved, so we're, we're thankful for that and appreciate that Josh is, is willing to, to help them and help support that, so. Any questions for me on anything?
My, my question would be about the, the clay target shooting. I am a gun owner and I, I do shoot, not well, but I do. But my concern is because we don't have guns in schools.
Yeah.
How, how does this fit with a public school? Basically allowing students to participate and this would be considered like an after-school co-curricular type of thing. I, I, I'm assuming.
Yes.
Now, maybe I'm reading into it misreading.
No, you're correct. It's like another, any other club. And one of the things that we always do is first check with PACE, who's our insurance cover, you know, our insurance carrier. And, and there are already high schools throughout the state and nation that have these clubs as part of, um, their high schools are connected to their high schools. So that's all covered. I think I, I, I sent you all a link about that. There was also, I'm not sure if I sent you the actual PDF, which was specifically from PACE and I think it was a, I, I will forward that to you. It was a four or five page document talking about, um, you know, what that looks like in a school. I knew, I know for sure that each of those students has to take, um, I believe a gun safety class and things like that. And, and I think Josh is on, I don't know if Josh wants to, to weigh in anymore on this or, or not, but, but yeah, it is, it is okay for us, for us to do, so I think.
Yeah, I'm on. If you've got other specifics, I've spoke with the state representative about, that's with the USA Clay Target High School Shooting Association, specifically from Oregon. They have a very strict policy that they must follow. The reason they'd like to join with schools is because they have a very strict grade and attendance policy that they like the students to adhere to. Also, they want their volunteers, all coaches are volunteers for them and they, they want to partner with schools in order to kind of vet, help vet those volunteers a little bit so that they, they, they go through our background checks and our fingerprinting process and things like that. And then the schools are allowed to give those coaches, those grade reports, those discipline reports, those attendance reports as needed because they have such a strict policy and I guess, uh, expectations for their, their participants. She did give me an example of, they had a student who was at a school who actually forgot that they had just a box of shells in their front seat. They didn't have the gun at school. They just had a box of shells at their, in their car seat.
Right.
Um, the SRO saw that as they were kind of doing a parking lot sweep and the student was not allowed to participate. I think it was two or three competitions for them because of the severity and their expectations at, uh, for their organization.
So here's the other question I have is the equity issue. There's families that possibly might have children that would wanna participate in something like this but not, might not have the resources. So how does that come about in this type of a situation?
That, that's a great, uh, question. Um, I haven't had time yet to call to the Ontario Gun Club and get specifics on that, but the parents that are working on that have told me in their conversations that the, um, the trap club here in Ontario has shotguns and firearms that they are willing to, um, loan, not rent, but loan those students that can't afford those.
So, so I'm assuming that that would happen, that the, the actual firearm would stay with the owner and that they would just be using it during the time that they would either be in a competition or in a practice session?
Yeah, that is something that we could, we could outline with those families that it has to stay locked at the facility, if that's something that we want. I don't know exactly what those details would, would be for the loan of the firearms, but that's something we could potentially talk about and put it into rules or expectations for that club.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Josh or Superintendent Albizu about any of her report? Thank you, Mr. Mink. The next item of business, we have the public comment section, but I didn't see any public comments submitted. So we'll move into the business section.
I didn't receive any.
Jolene, did you say something?
I said I didn't receive anything.
Okay, thank you. So the next, the next item on our agenda is approval of policy G C P C forward slash G D P C, the retirement of staff.
This is second reading of this policy.
Does anyone have any comments?
No, I was just gonna say thank you for letting us know as a second reading because I'm like, okay, did we, we did this already, right? I, uh, kind of confused myself every once in a while. Um, Director Corn, if you're ready to entertain a motion, I'll make a motion. I will move to approve policy G C P C underscore G D P C.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to approve policy G C P C forward slash G D P C. Director Draper, how do you vote?
Yes.
Director Gettis?
Yes.
Director Rodriguez? Blanca, I couldn't hear you, but your mouth looked like it said yes.
Yes.
Director Evans?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That's unanimous in passing it. The next item is approval of policy J B equal educational opportunity.
This is, yes, this is also second reading.
I'll make a motion to approve policy J B equal opportu, equal education opportunity.
Is there a second?
I second.
I'll second.
Okay, is there any discussion? I didn't call for a discussion last time. If there's no discussion, we'll proceed to vote. Okay, Director Draper, how do you vote?
Yes.
Director Gettis?
Yes.
Director Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Director Evans?
Yes.
And I vote yes. It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, the next item is the approval of the 2019 2020 audit. We reviewed the audit in our work session. I'm looking for a motion to approve it.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2019, 2020 audit.
It's been moved to approve the 2019, 2020 audit. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Oh, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the 2019 2020 audit. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. Director Draper, how do you vote?
Yes.
Director Gettis?
Yes.
Director Rodriguez?
Yes.
Director Evans?
Yes.
And I vote yes, it's unanimous. Okay, the next item is the approval of the budget calendar for the 2021 22 year.
Oh, if you're ready for a motion, I'll make a motion to approve the 2020 2020 2021 budget calendar.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the 2021 22 Ontario School District Budget Calendar. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. Director Draper?
Yes.
Director Gettis?
Yes.
Director Rodriguez?
Yes.
Director Evans?
Yes.
And I vote yes, it's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, the next item is the approval of the first reading for policy J F C M threats of violence. Okay. So this one I found a little confusing just because of the marking on it. So I'm looking for whoever worked on it to guide us through this.
So so, yeah, this actually was sent to us with these recommended changes by Oregon School Board Association. So the the highlighted area are the additions that they have recommended making to this. So so when you see that, that's what that is. I will say in third paragraph where it says, there's some brackets where it says the superintendent or designee. My recommendation that it reads just like that, the superintendent or designee shall notify parents or guardians of any student in violation of this policy and the disciplinary action imposed. And there's a few other places where it also reads that way. But much of this is just due to some of the updated legislation and it clarifies that. It doesn't, the overall policy doesn't change much other than just a few additions. And then it includes also the definition under Oregon, under O R S six, five, nine, eight, five, zero. So.
Is there any further discussion on this?
What is what is the G one dash one? Is that? I guess I'm, I was trying to figure, it's policy J F C M, right? But what's G one dash one?
Where are you looking?
Um, it's on our agenda. It says J F C M G one dash one. And I I guess what I'm trying to say is, when I, when we make a motion on this, are we just approving J F C M? Or are we approving J F C M G one dash one?
Um, I'm sorry, I'm getting back there. I was looking at the the actual policy and I I don't know.
Is that is that because there's different versions?
Oh, yeah, you're you're correct. Sorry. We didn't actually receive another version of this. We only received this version. And the reason for that was because what they do is if districts have varying versions, sometimes they'll send you like three versions and I have to actually, I look up the policy to see which one is ours. And then I can go from there. They actually only sent us this one. This time they didn't send another version. So so, yeah, you are correct. But this is the, this is the updated version because it is updating what we already had. So those highlights are updated. So you'll just, so you will just need to, if you make a motion to approve first reading, you'll just need to make a motion for J F C M.
So can I make a recommendation on this for our approval? And are we required to do a second reading? Or can we just approve this with the highlighted additions? Would the board have?
Yeah, that's at your discretion.
Okay.
Um, and sometimes we've done that in the past or other times. And when they're a little more complicated and we make some changes, you guys like to go through a second reading. But yes, you may go and do both at once.
How does, how do other members of the board feel about that on this one, rather than bringing it back next time?
But I'm fine with that. I would entertain a motion to do that if you're wanting to do that.
So I will move. I will move to approve policy J F C M threats of violence with the highlighted additions as written.
Is there a second to approve policy J F C M with the highlighted additions?
Yeah, just for, I'll make I'll make a second and just to clarify that this is the, you know, as part of this is the final reading as well.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to approve J F C M with the highlighted additions. This will be the final reading. How do you vote, Director Draper?
Yes.
Director Gettis?
Yes.
Director Rodriguez?
Yes.
Director Evans?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is approval of certified administrators. Superintendent Albizu, would you be so kind as to explain? Because we have a new board member, how this works?
Yeah, I'm actually going to let the director of personnel
Okay.
do this and I believe he's on. Mr. Norton?
Okay, so each year at the February board meeting, it's the board's charged to renew contracts of licensed staff. So you'll see in that document that probationary licensed staff, they have their contracts looked at yearly. They're they're just on a one-year contract, licensed staff. For teachers, they're on a two-year contract. And for licensed administrator, they're on a three-year contract. And that's spelt out in Oregon statute. And so and also on the document, you'll see that we have a couple temporary positions and per statute, those automatically terminate at the end of the school year. And so that's why you'll see that those positions will automatically terminate per statute. So anyways, by statute, we have to let licensed staff know by March fifteenth. And so typically, that's why you'll see this in the February meeting instead of the March. Because a lot of times the March meeting falls after the fifteenth.
Thank you so much. That was very good clarification.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
So can you tell me what a probationary staff is? That probation, probationary licensed staff? So can you give me the, what the definition of a probationary licensed staff member is?
Yeah, so by by statute, each licensed staff member in the state of Oregon has to serve a three-year probationary period. And during that period, they are only granted a one-year contract. And and once they, once that three, three years is up, then they just go to contract status.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
So that being said, I'm looking for a motion to approve the when we get back to it. The certified, the approval of the certified staff and administrators.
I'll only move to approve the certified administrators and staff.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the certified staff and administrators. Is there any discussion? Okay, Director Draper, how do you vote?
Yes.
Director Gettis?
Yes.
Director Rodriguez?
Yes.
Director Evans?
Yeah.
Thank you. I vote yes, so it's unanimous. Okay, the next item is the approval of a budget committee member. I think we're privileged, if I'm not mistaken, that we actually have this person online with us tonight. Mrs. Amber Campbell has submitted letter of interest in serving on our budget committee. So welcome, Amber. We're glad you're with us tonight, the board members. And we approve Amber to the budget committee.
I'll make a motion to appoint Amber Campbell to our budget board committee, whatever we call.
Okay, do I have a second? Moved and seconded to approve Amber Campbell to the budget board committee. All in favor, Director Draper?
Yes.
Director Gettis?
Yes.
Director Rodriguez?
Yes, and thank you.
Director Evans?
Absolutely, yes.
And I vote yes. So welcome aboard, Amber. Thank you. Okay, so our next item of business is approval of a survey. So we discussed in our work session the possibility of the Ontario School Board of Directors commissioning a survey. Is there further discussion on this topic? Director Rodriguez, did you have something you wanted to say?
I think we need to look at the data that is available first before deciding.
Director Gettis, did you have something you wanted to say? No. Director Evans, you indicated you were ready to say something.
Yeah, you know, I think we've been kicking this down the road for plenty of long, a long time. I think we should just get going on this and get a firm started in in preparing a survey for us.
And I am still not in favor of doing a survey at this time without exhausting some of the local resources that we already have available. I think it's important that we do look at the data that we have. We've been given, I was negligent in following up on the survey data that we were sent. We we requested it in December. We did not get it till Karen, I'm I'm not sure, but I want to say after the 10th or so of January. Is that correct?
No, that's not correct. We sent it out within a week of the previous of the board meeting where the information was shared.
Okay, I stand corrected. Please forgive me for that. I knew it was sometime. I will need to check on on my end and see why I didn't receive it.
How about, how about this, what your guys' thoughts are on this? How about tonight? You guys tell me who, if it's just one person or two people, that the next board meeting, you guys, if if you guys would be interested in hosting them virtually, of course, and they can chat with you and you guys could ask questions.
I think I'm.
Go ahead, Derek.
We've been kicking this down the road for years and.
Derek, you kind of cut out that whole thing you said just now. Derek, did you hear that? We didn't hear what you said.
Well, while we're waiting for Director Draper to get back on, Eric, can you restate what you were saying? You you were looking for?
Uh, suggestions from the board of whether they would like to hear from one or both of these. Or one's an individual and one's a group. That's all I was asking. Looks like Derek might be back. He muted and unmuted.
Yeah, I'm back. I I really think we need to vote on it tonight.
Derek, what's your, what's your thoughts on where, what direction you would go with what, which one of these firms?
I think that we need a pretty extensive situation.
So you're talking like the more expensive, the forty thousand dollar option, the thirty, the middle line?
No, I think we need to do it right, that the forty thousand dollar. Well, and we can have them come and talk about everything that they're going to do. But what you have is pretty good.
So I I want to know, are we committed if they come and give us their presentation? And then we we look at it and we say, oh, this isn't quite what we wanted.
I I mean, I guess it depends on what we decide tonight.
I think, oh, sorry.
I think it would be in our best interest to reserve that right to get further information before we commit ourselves to something.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think that I mean, if I was, I mean, I would anyways. I think they would be more than happy to come talk to us.
But I think we need to move past just talking about it. We've been talking about this for years. We need to decide on a firm and have them come and go through some of it. And I agree, Renee, that that we should be able to say, this is what we want and and be able to dicker a little bit with it. But I think we need to move forward. I think the board needs to vote.
Well, I think we've got a couple of competing things here in my mind. We've got the data that we already have, that I think you were the only one that reviewed it. You you indicated that you'd spent several hours reviewing it. We have proposals basically by two different firms. It would seem like it would probably be best for us to, for lack of a better term, interview whoever we feel like would best fit our needs, but still to reserve the right that if we're not comfortable with them, that we continue looking so that we get a good fit.
I'm I'm certainly okay with that. One of, one of the issues that I have with the data that we already do have, like I mentioned earlier in a board meeting, was I extensively reviewed it and it it didn't make sense to me. I couldn't get the numbers to tie or add up. And I went through it for hours. So the help with a professional expert firm would be very beneficial in my mind.
If I could, Director Corn, how about this? I'm going to make it unless, Laca, Laca, you you got close to the. If I could, Director Corn, how about this? I'm gonna make it unless, blocka, blocka, you, you got close to the mic like someone else's. The whole yield to you.
I think that we need to hear what data we have locally first. And then decide if this survey is gonna happen. We need to decide the timing before we commit. And I think that the superintendent should have a say as to when it's appropriate. If we do it.
What's the intended outcome of the survey? What do you want to do with the data that is generated by the survey?
I, I mean, you're asking that to me, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I mean, I've kind of said this, but, I mean, I think that it's about making us successful here at Ontario, on the Ontario School Board. And so that's the intended outcome for us to gather knowledge in order to to ensure our success.
And, and I think with this data, with data from the survey, we'll be able to figure out what goals new we need to have to improve. And if there's additional policies that we need to make to help us reach those goals. That's, that's what this information's gonna provide is what goals, what we need to do to be better and, and how we can do that.
So, is the, is the survey centered around how the board can be more successful? Are we talking about the school district as a whole?
I mean, initially, my, my thoughts are that it's a, you know, it's, it's about the entire district, the health of the district, yes.
And the board is part of that, would be a part of that whole bigger picture. And like Derek talked about earlier in our work session, also trying to figure out what we need to do to pass a bond. That's gonna be, that's part of what we want to find out too. It's an information gathering survey and it's, it's finding out where we're strong, where we're weak, what we can do to improve. And I don't understand why we fear that. If, and maybe fear is the wrong word. I don't understand why we, why we don't want to have that information or find out that information.
I think there's a lack of trust among some board members. And so, I think that's the reason. It's, it kind, it's kind of scary.
So, okay, so, this is a third party coming in and doing it. It's, it's a it's not any one board member or group of board members that are gonna do the survey. That should take, that should take the, the, the fear and the scariness out of this. Because it's not, we're giving a company that does this for their, their job, their living, their, their livelihoods. They're good at it. They're gonna come in and they're gonna help us develop a survey and they're gonna help us administer a survey that's non-biased. That's the whole reason of having a third party do it as opposed to having us as a board do it. It's a third-party, non-biased person. And that should, that should really help with that uncomfortable feeling that there's somebody out to get somebody. And I don't think anybody's out to get anybody. I think it's we're just trying to get information and see what we need to do to be better.
It's interesting that every four years, theoretically, this board has a survey when we go for reelection. And if the voters like what we're doing, they reelect us. If they don't, then we're not reelected. And that tells us it's it's anonymous and it tells us a lot. And like I said earlier, it's healthy. Surveys are healthy. There, we're not, we're not trying to, to go out and, and do something that's not healthy for the district.
May I ask for Nikki's opinion?
Yes.
Um, so I think that the maybe the, the challenge or the mistrust comes on how this came about and originally, when the discussion was started, there was a lot of contention and and I don't believe that the reasoning was clear. I mean, we had the reasons seemed to revolve around administration and the, you know, we need to find out what this district, you know, we need to hear from everybody what we're doing wrong. And so I think that's kind of the challenge in, in this because obviously we, we have welcomed feedback and we're trying to share some of our feedback with you. So, I guess that, that, that's where it started is when, when we first started talking about a survey, there was, there were, weren't, was not a clear goal to it. And, and again, there was a lot of contention and a lot of really negative stuff. It was, it was about residency and it was about you know, administration and a lot of different things happened at each and every one of those, those board meetings where it was discussed. And I'm gonna just go back to what I said earlier in the work session and that is, is that we have really worked hard to collect feedback more. And I, I feel like that as in order to be informed, I feel like you all should review that prior to taking this next step because this is a big step. It it's a big step in that it's $40,000, big step. And, and it would it just seems like we should maybe take a closer look at what we have. And not to say that there, that wouldn't be a step in the future, but for now, let's look at what we have. I think the other the other thing here too, and I mentioned this before, and that is timing. And we are still working our way out of, or, or back into, I guess, some normalcy in regards to COVID. And I still do believe that, that, that has some influence on how people feel about just even the world in general, but also education. And so that's my two cents.
Director Corn, I'd like to make a motion that we invite these people with the intention of hiring one of them for the survey.
Can we make it a little more specific? Can we narrow it down to one of the proposals? The one I would say have them come is the, how do you say it? Coraggio Group, is that what it was? Trying to see, yeah, Coraggio.
Yeah, it's something like that.
So, Derek, could I amend it to say a motion to invite the Coraggio Group to present at our next board meeting so we can hear what they have to offer?
Yes, thank you. That, that's great.
Okay, it's been moved to invite the presenters, the both, both survey groups to come and talk to us. I need a second on that before we amend the motion. Is there a second on that?
Remind me, do we need to, do we need to second it before we amend it?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second, I'll second that.
And then I would call for, for more discussion. And then it's been, we have an amendment to invite just the Coraggio Group to come. Craig, did you specify a time? I don't, I don't believe I heard a time. Did you?
Our next board meeting.
At our next board meeting. Okay. And that wouldn't necessarily have to be in person, correct? Because we do Zoom.
Correct, that could be virtual.
Okay, all right. So, it's then, the motion has been amended to invite the Coraggio Group to come and give basically a presentation on the possibility of doing a survey for the district. Is there any further discussion on this?
Now, did we have a second on that amendment?
I don't know if we did. Did we have a second?
I'll, I'll second on that amendment as well.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to amend the main motion to have the Coraggio Group come to our board meeting next month and give a presentation basically on doing a survey for the Ontario School District. I'm looking for voting on this. Director Gettis, you're voting on the amendment at this point in time?
Yes.
Director Evans?
Yes.
Director Draper?
Yes.
Director Rodriguez?
No.
Okay, and I vote no. It's three to two on the amendment. So now we're voting on the main motion, which would read that we have the Coraggio Group come next month and present to our board meeting. All in favor? Director Gettis?
Yes, and I'm gonna make a commitment to review data that's been submitted to us before that time.
Okay, Director Evans?
Yes.
Director Draper?
Yes.
Director Rodriguez?
No.
And I will vote no as well. So, the motion carries three to two, three in favor, two against. So, we will be having the Coraggio people come to the March Board Meeting. Just for information, I did look up on my email, the information that I received came on the 12th of January on that survey information. Okay, so we are now to the approval to reopen the RFP for the attorney.
Can I, I mean, we had quite a bit of discussion at this, Renee, but I would just like to entertain or I'd like to make a motion that we open up the RFP for our district's attorney for one week.
Do I have a second? Okay, motion dies for lack of a second.
Can I redo that motion and say that we're gonna open it for a two-week period?
I suppose you could. We probably should have passed the one or approved it and amended the other. But I will allow you to make another motion.
Okay, so I would move to open RFP for an attorney for two weeks.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to reopen the RFP for an attorney for the Ontario School District. Is there any discussion? Hey, Director Gettis, how do you vote?
Yes.
Director Evans?
Yeah.
Director Draper?
Yes.
Director Rodriguez?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so it's unanimous. So Superintendent Albizu, I believe that in the past when we had the RFP that you, the district office sent that out. Is that correct?
Yes, we've posted it on our, on our website. And we will repost this. Are there any changes that the board is making to that current RFP?
Not at this time. The only request I would have is just that we make sure that we get it out soon.
We'll get right on it.
Okay.
And, and that it goes through the right channels?
Okay.
Okay. All right, so the next item on our agenda is the approval of the Maheur County ESD Local Service Plan. Superintendent Albizu, would you like to give us your recommendation on that?
Um, yes. Our local ESD is a really good partner of ours and they think we do well to support one another. And I would recommend that the board approve their local, the local service plan.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Superintendent Albizu that you might have about that? Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve it.
Director Corn, I'll make a motion to approve the Maheur ESD Local Service Plan.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the Maheur County ESD Local Service Plan. Director Gettis, how do you vote?
Yes.
Director Evans?
Yeah.
Director Draper?
Yes.
Director Rodriguez?
Yes.
And I vote yes, it's unanimous. Okay, we're down to topics for future meetings. I believe that I added to the agenda that I wanted to have a discussion about the superintendent evaluation. We need to do that in Superintendent Albizu's contract. It says that we are supposed to have that done by the 28th of February. We are under some extenuating circumstances at this time. I don't know if we can push that out a little bit. The 28th of February is Sunday. And we need to decide which evaluation form we're going to use and when we're going to do this. Director Draper?
I went back and reviewed trainings and notes and past board meeting minutes. And there's no way we can use the new form. Even Superintendent Albizu herself at our last OSBA training said that she and the board were using the old form for the evaluation. And so, there's just absolutely no way we can use anything other than that.
And what is the reason? Derek?
I just mentioned why.
Because Nikki said that we were using the old one?
Well, that's, that's what we've been using all year long supposedly. And Nikki at the meeting, Superintendent Albizu, and if you'd like to review it, I could give you the exact timeframe on the OSBA training where she said it, said that she was using the old form and that's what she and the board agreed on. And what I found interesting, when she reported to us last month, she used the new form. So, I was confused. But after reviewing everything from the past year, I don't see an option of using the new form.
I don't know.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Director Gettis, you have your hand up.
Yeah, so when we talked about this before, I said that I I said that I wanted to look at both forms because I hadn't had an opportunity to look at them. I read through the old form. I also read through the new form. Then in the old form, it specifically says that the format of the. Evaluation should be decided upon at the beginning of the year. And my understanding is that that old form was what was agreed on at the beginning of the year. So I think we need to stick with that form.
It was never agreed upon. That was something that did not happen. As far as I can find, I also reviewed the minutes and looked to find where that happened within the last year. I did not find it. If, if someone did, I would appreciate them pointing me to it. Director Evans, you have your hand up.
Yes, sorry about that. And I, I kind of go along. With them as well. You know, we started this process before there was ever any new form. That hadn't even been created. I mean, the, this new form. Is something that is, we learned about what last month. I, it does concern me a little bit that we would be opening ourselves up to some kind of a liability is if we switch directions. I mean, we are switching directions because those forms didn't, weren't even there months and months ago. When we started this. This period for this evaluation period. So, so changing this late in the game. I think we should probably just stick to what we have.
Director Rodriguez, did you have a comment?
Yes, do you think that the Oregon School Board Association would put us into a problem with that? If they are there to guide us? You think they want to create problems for us or guide us?
I, are you directing that towards me?
Yes.
I think that every district is different. I don't know when other districts found out about this tool. But I know that we found out about it like weeks ago, so. I don't, I still think that it's not a good idea to use, to change directions this late in the game.
And at what date would it be okay to use the new one?
I would say February of 2022.
The next evaluation.
So, so what you're saying though is that when we complete this survey, this evaluation and we get. Set up for next year, we adopt the new form as the tool we're going to use. Is that what you're saying?
I would, I would, yeah, that's what I would say. I would say we use the one that. It looks like was the anticipated one to be used. And, and in that, I, I do remember in that OSBA training, they brought up this new form. Somebody asked, wait a minute, we don't have to use this one. We were going to use the old one and that was what my understanding, that was what we were going to do. And then when we set goals and start the process for the next one, then we adopt that we're going to use the new form that's been developed and go forward with it at that point.
Okay. Do you have any, go ahead, Blanca.
So if we use the old evaluation form. I feel like I, I strongly recommend that we have a mediator helping us. We really like third-party opinions, so. It would be very, very helpful to have that person help us. It's a difficult thing to do. We had negative experiences in the past.
I agree, and I would recommend us reaching out to, I, I would like to see an attorney do this personally. And I would like to, it'd be a great time to figure this out, but I would like to recommend that we use Dustin Martinson. That comes in with us and go over this evaluation and it's a good time to see if he's a good fit with us as a board as well.
I don't know if it's qualified as the ones that are directing the Oregon School Board Association.
Are you saying he's not qualified as an attorney?
We, do we need an attorney or a mediator that knows the district's functions?
I think with the current situation in our district, we need an attorney.
I'm not comfortable at this point in time with. Asking for Mr. Martinson to sit with us as an attorney in this situation. I expressed in the prior meeting that my family has used the firm that he works with for a number of years. I feel like that that would be a conflict for me. I also am uncomfortable with the fact that he works for the firm that is Director Draper's father-in-law's firm. I think that that would be. Not a good thing for us to do, particularly with the evaluation at this point in time. If we need to get an attorney, I think we need to look elsewhere for that particular situation.
I, again, Director Corn respectfully disagree. I feel like if we hired an attorney and they felt there was a conflict of interest in any fashion. Then they would tell us before we engage them. And so. I, I agree with Directors Evans and Gettis. We, I think we need an attorney to sit in during this evaluation process. And I think Dustin's a great attorney.
Well, I'm, I'm not disputing that Dustin's a great attorney. I just am not comfortable with him serving in this capacity, especially at this time in this particular situation with the evaluation.
I, I actually think that he would absolutely serve us well and he would protect us from any liabilities and. Do his job as an attorney well and represent his clients.
Is he the only attorney available?
I think we don't know the answer to that because we've not asked for other. Possibilities of attorneys that could sit with us during the evaluation period. We did not know that that was something that we were even considering.
Me neither.
Well, with, with the timing situation, I think we should put it to a vote. We can legally engage an attorney. For this engagement. And if, if someone's not comfortable, then their vote will state that. And if we choose an attorney and they're not comfortable, then they'll let us know.
I, I'm very. Uncomfortable with letting the majority just rule on this. I feel like that it's not representative of. All of the feelings of the entire board as well as looking out for the interests of the superintendent. One of the things that when we had our training that we were counseled by our trainers with from OSBA was that. During this evaluation period that it was important, very important that. We come to consensus and the consensus is not necessarily always with majority rule.
So is the opposition to having the mediator be an attorney? Or is the opposition to having. Mr. Martinson be the attorney? I mean, I'm, I'm not very to any particular person on this, on this. I'm, I'm willing to go with other attorneys.
My personal opinion, Craig, is if we need an attorney, I can swallow having an attorney. I. I'm uncomfortable in this particular situation for this particular assignment. Using someone that I already do business with that firm and that I know there's. Director Draper's father-in-law is in that firm. I just feel like that it is not a good representation. Of a board doing something like that in this situation.
So how do we go about finding somebody that we're all comfortable with?
My recommendation would be that we contact Haley Purcell at OSBA and we ask if there's someone. That would be willing to sit through the process with the board. And basically, they would have to act as somewhat of a facilitator.
I agree with that.
Director Draper, I saw your hand up.
I completely disagree with that notion. I think attorneys have been chosen in the past to, that we work with as a entire board that the board didn't decide. And so I'm on the other side of the fence. I. I'm not dead set that Dustin Martinson has to be the attorney, but I think we need a local attorney. I, I would prefer not using OSBA's recommendations or their attorney.
May I ask why?
The same reason, the same reason that Director Corn doesn't want to use Dustin Martinson.
You have a conflict of interest?
I think there are some conflicts of interest.
Greg, I'm going to ask you because you're the new board member. Would you please research what the Oregon School Board Association's job is? And then maybe help your other two friends understand what they do.
I, I want to make something really clear here, Blanca. I don't make decisions based on what Derek and Eric are saying. So that tell your friends what, what the OSBA is for. I'm my own person. I've demonstrated that multiple times in these meetings. I do not like that in, that, that assumption that I convinced Derek and Eric of anything or they convinced me.
I, I apologize for not explaining. I use their names because they are the ones against it. Not because you have influenced over them.
So. And I'd like. I, I'd also like to point out the fact that I, I'm not against your guys' idea or I'm not, you know, attacking you. For suggesting OSBA and, and not going with it. You know, I honestly, I, just because I suggested Dustin Martinson. Doesn't, doesn't mean anything. I, I'm against OSBA doing this. And I'm not against you because you're against Dustin Martinson. Maju, and so we're talking about consensus here, but the tone right now is, is not a good, it's not a consensus tone. It's a, I want to do it my way tone.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry you feel that way.
And so where the discussion was centered on how do we find a local attorney? That can sit with us through the evaluation process. Is that correct, Craig? Was that your last ask?
Yeah, is finding a local attorney who, who can do this that we're all comfortable with. That, that's what I was wanting to make progress on.
Director Corn, I would suggest because of, of conflicts of interest and. Other underlying tones that if Director Gettis would. Be open to it, that he be the one who finds an attorney, a local attorney for the board.
Uh, yeah, I'm good with that too. I'd say that.
I can hear that.
Scaring daggers at me.
No, you're good. I was just kind of wheels turning already. Um, yeah, I'm willing to take that on.
Director Rodriguez, are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay. I, I think.
So, so, so that I'm, I want to be really clear. What I'm looking for is an attorney specifically to. Set with us and facilitate the. Process, the, the evaluation process.
Right, and it needs to be done this week.
Done this week, okay. And as I'm talking to them, what, what time? Commitment are they committing to so that I can give them an idea of what they're doing? This is my first time through an evaluation, so I have no idea. Is this one meeting? Is this five meetings that they're going to have to set in? What are, what are we looking at?
I, I would, if I was doing it, Craig, I would ask them for four, a four-hour meeting. The first, first meeting with a possible second meeting of two hours.
Okay. And we don't have dates for those meetings at this point.
Um, I think probably at this.
That's probably the next.
Of an attorney of when they would have time.
Okay. I can do that.
So we probably need to have a motion to authorize Craig to act on behalf of the board. To secure legal counsel to sit with the board during the evaluation. Meeting. The chair would entertain the motion.
So, so moved.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve Director Gettis. To secure legal counsel for the board to sit with the board during the evaluation process for Superintendent Albizu. And so now, is there any further discussion? Okay, let's proceed to vote. Director Draper?
Yes.
Director Gettis?
Yes.
Director Rodriguez?
Yes.
Director Evans?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So Director Gettis, you have been appointed and authorized by the board to secure legal counsel to do that. Okay. So.
Do we, do we need to have discussion about dates too now? What our thoughts are about dates and?
Well, I think our thoughts about, in my opinion, our thoughts about dates are going to center around when we can get an attorney that will meet with us.
I agree. Did we, did we decide on the form, the procedure that we're using yet? Or I think we got sidetracked.
We got sidetracked. So on the form. I'm looking for a motion. We've had the discussion.
I'll move to use the, is it the 2019? Form?
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to use the 2019 form. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Director Draper, how do you vote?
Yes.
Director Gettis?
Yes.
Director Rodriguez?
No.
Director Evans?
Yes.
And I will vote in favor of using the 2019 form. Because I said I would go with what the board decided on that. I think we're making more work for ourselves, but I will vote in favor. So we have four in favor, one against. So that being said, I think until we hear from Director Gettis, we've probably done all we can do. The board
I'll make a motion to
Go ahead.
I apologize. I'm sorry. I thought you took a breath. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn. Director Draper?
Yes.
Director Gettis?
Yes.
Director Rodriguez?
Yes.
Director Evans?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes too. It's unanimous. We're now adjourned. Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Thank you all. Good night.
Greg, I apologize one more time.
I apologize if I got a little, if I got a little, yeah, Blanca, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine. I respect you. Thank you.
Thanks, Blanca.
I appreciate your humbleness, Blanca, and I'll apologize as well if I got a little snappy with you.
Well, today is the day for apologies. So everybody is forgiven.
Every day is. Yes. Thank you, Blanca. Thank you. I appreciate you.
And thank you.